We're going to call this meeting to order at this time. We're going to have Commissioner Hollingsworth read the invocation, please.
Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done with us. First of all, I want to say a special prayer for the deputy that died this week. Very close friend of mine and close to a lot of people. Very good man. And I send my heartfelt sympathies, and I know the board does, to his family and friends. I also want to pray for this country, pray for this board, and all the people here today. That we can get things done, do the right thing, make sure that everyone's tax dollars are spent efficiently and correctly. And I want to thank you for all these guys up here. They do a great job, and it's not an easy job a lot of the time. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let me lead you through the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, in everything.
Yep. Any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir. We would like to do the first resolution of the 2022 R-68, changing the date and time of the December 15th meeting. The second one is Resolution 22 R-67, accepting the state EMS fund. That application is due the 16th of December, so if the meeting gets moved to the 15th, or from the 15th to the 22nd, we need to go ahead and approve the grant so we can get it submitted by the 16th. So that's the only reason that was added, is because if the meeting date changes, we have no other time support.
So you want to...
Just those two items.
You just want to put these at the end, David?
Yes, sir.
Of yours?
Perfect.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Chair, I'd pull number nine for explanation.
Number nine. We'll just add that to David's at the end of...
Oh, you want to do that now?
Well, there's two different ways we do it. We can do it prior to the vote on adoption, and then just include it as part of the consent agenda with explanation, or we can pull it as a separate discussion item.
Well, let's just do it now.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that...
Okay.
David, just real quick, just give us a review. What was the 2004?
Yeah, so basically, there was a bunch of things the board has previously approved in BA, and so we're trying to get all those caught up into one BA. That's allocate funds to recreation for IT equipment. That's basically stuff to get the new offices operating.
Me and Ron can't hear y'all doing it. Me and Ron can't hear y'all doing it.
Oh, I apologize. That's a good point. I need to pay better attention to that. So this particular BA is because the board's approved several actions, and then this is getting caught up on moving the funds around to pay for the actions that the board has previously approved. The allocation of funds for recreation for IT equipment, $2,000, is primarily because we did open the new recreation office. We needed to make some changes on the IT side in terms of computers and phones and that sort of stuff, and this provides that money in their budget.
Discuss it to them real quick, if you don't mind.
Okay. The $10,000 IT revenues and repairs and maintenance, that was something the board previously approved for IT equipment that they needed, but we did not have a BA at the time. Funds for the Fort White Little League football, the board appropriated $7,500 for Fort White Little League football. However, the BA, because we weren't aware at the time, wasn't created, so this moves that money so that we can actually give it to the Fort White Little League football. Allocate funds for the Fort White recreation salaries, $100,000. That moves $100,000 for salaries that if we open the open gym and activities at the Fort White Elementary School in February that we talked about at the last meeting, that gives us money to pay for those gym attendants for the rest of the fiscal year. Allocate insurance reimbursements. Basically, we filed insurance claims. The insurance reimbursements came. This then puts that money into the account where the equipment is being purchased to fix or replace the damaged equipment. And then property appraiser reversion for aerial photography. When the property appraiser turned in his money, he asked for another, or to return $49,143 to get a new version of the aerial photography and get him back on schedule according to the contract. And the board was agreeable to that, and this is the budget amendment that then puts that back in his budget so that he can pay for the aerial photography.
Good. I appreciate that. When will the SO Sheriff's Office settle their money they're turning back in?
We're planning to put that at the next board meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Any more questions on number nine for the consent agenda? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so we'll move on to Joe County.
I think you need to do the adoption motion real quick, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
Can I get a motion for the adoption of consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two quick items. We have some requests for road closure. Both of these are in the chair's district. The petitions and a short memo explaining each petition is attached. I'm going to take them in order as I have them on the agenda. First, talking about Mr. Weber's petition to vacate a portion of Southwest Salem Road. The purpose of the motion, of the resolution today is just to decide if you want to set a hearing where the closure of this road will be considered and finally voted on. There's some publication requirements and notice requirements for the folks that might be affected here. Pardon me. And so the request is, from the applicant, was to set for January 19th of 2023. If there's any questions or concerns about the petition or the supporting exhibits, I'm happy to address those. That's the request.
Counselor, I... Yeah, I've got a few. Number one, in the report, it was listed in there about opening Tall Pine as a through road to Salem.
Yes, sir.
I don't want that to be part of this resolution. Now, as far as closing part of Salem, I would, I don't mind setting a public hearing to hear what the people have to say in that area, but I would request a letter, not just advertising, but a letter sent out to all parties involved so they are aware of this so they can have their time to talk. I understand why the owners that are proposing this closure are doing it. And talking to the people out there, so far, I haven't heard a lot of people turn too bad too much about closing that part of Salem, but they definitely don't want to open Tall Pine up as a through road, and I don't blame them. I wouldn't want that either. So I'm okay with setting a public hearing date for the closure of Salem, but I don't want to include Tall Pine in that.
And, yeah, Commissioner, he had made that a part of his petition, but absolutely the only power the board has is to close and vacate. So if we were going to open and change, we'd have to do dedications. My review of the map suggests we might even have to do some eminent domain to do what he's proposing. So, yeah, the only thing that would be on the agenda would be whether or not to close Salem, and then what happened after that would be a separate matter entirely. The request that letters go out, the way we usually handle these is we ask the applicant to incur all costs. So would you like me to send the letters and then invoice him for that cost, or would you like me to direct him to send the letters?
I would like for you to send the letters.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And the reason being, everybody don't see postings.
Sir.
I think we owe these people out there a letter with what he's proposing to do and let them have their say, and plenty of notice they'll appear.
So the extent of Salem Road runs from 242 all the way back. Heck, I don't even have it on the map. You want me to do the full extent of Salem from one end to the other?
Yes. There's not that many residences.
No, I understand. I understand.
Oh, so...
If you'll just make a motion, a motion to that effect.
Yeah, a motion to that effect, but what day? I don't want to set this public hearing to sometime in January, because, I mean, you know, we've got Christmas coming up and everything else.
Yes, sir. He requested January 19th, which is an evening meeting, so it puts us in a good spot, gives him plenty of time to advertise. Plenty of time.
Okay. I'm okay with that date, so I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing date on this for January the 19th. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is a request by Ms. Parkl. She's requesting to close a portion of Center, Central Terrace out at Three Rivers. This is a piece that directly adjoins the portion that you closed for Ms. Trammell not too long ago. The issue, however, if you remember Ms. Trammell, the neighbor across the street was one piece of property that had alternative accesses. You do have a couple of parcels here that would lose access if this portion of road was closed, and so if there's no objection, then certainly, no objection, but I think based on what the board just did with the last one, it would only be three more letters. I would suggest that those folks be notified directly if the board's inclined to set a hearing.
And then again, if we do send the letters, I'm okay with, this is a dead-end street. It goes into a, like a creek area there. There's a lot of, a lot of activity with people trespassing with four-wheelers and five-bysides. It's hard to keep them out of there. We have put up numerous signs in the, in the public roads, and the signs get tore down. They get, I mean, it's just, if we close this part of the road, then that would allow them to put a fence up to try to keep people out of their property. And if the people, if everybody down there in that part is inclined to do it, I have no problem doing that. So again, we can set a public hearing for the same night if you want to.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing for the 19th on that also. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirby.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I only have one item for your consideration this morning. This is your annual concrete contract bid number 20119-U for annual concrete construction, initially awarded to Creative Concrete Design of Columbia County, Inc. on January 16th of 2020. Contract provides renewal for up to five years. The work performance has been satisfactory. Requesting a motion to renew annual concrete construction contract with Creative Concrete Design of Columbia County, Inc. through a period ending January 15th of '24, as attached.
So moved. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Mr. Krass.
Thank you very much. This first item is actually a good item. Economic Development Agreement for Project 2120. We've discussed it with the board before. There is a small coal storage facility that would like to open up in Columbia County. They would build 140,000 square foot facility minimum, employ a total of 50 full-time equivalent employees, and provide a capital investment of $20 million. What they're asking for is an economic incentive of where we would provide the land, which is the parcel we own of 19.5 acres on 100 near 100 panels. EDA includes that the vertical construction, the actual start of construction would be one year, would have to be by one year of the date of closing. It would also say that the place has to be open for at least 10 years for the final things to be satisfied, and that if for whatever reason they don't live up to the terms and conditions, the property would revert back to the county. We're asking for the board to consider approving the Economic Development Agreement with Project 2120 to donate land to the company in exchange for the infrastructure, employment, and construction.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
I think it, I think it would be a good deal because it is in my district, and we need something on that side, being we're going to get some more on the other side off of dining, so that way we'll get more gas money from, tax money from the crook back forth. But I appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree. This is a good investment for Columbia County. So motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the planning, Community Planning and Technical Assistance Grant Ward from the Department of Economic Opportunity, $65,000. It's basically to do a pre-master plan for the Bell Road corridor, which includes from 441 to 41, so it includes that section that isn't yet built, what we talked about before, the Bell Road extension. What this does is this will allow them to go out and look at the land development regulations, comp plan, economic incentives, the topography, the soils, and kind of come up with a plan of how that area needs to be developed to maximize the highest and best use for industrial and economic growth in the future. It gives us data that we will need as we expand the DUDA up to I-10, so the data is going to be very critical as we're working on expanding the DUDA towards I-10. And so we're asking for approval and acceptance of the grant for $65,000.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is, we've all talked about the industrial, North Florida Mega Industrial Park and the fact that we want to build this wastewater treatment plant. We've got a construction manager at risk. Construction manager says it should not exceed our guaranteed maximum price of $29 million, $28 million. We have dedicated to this project roughly $20 million, $21 million. You can see where our funds are that we're targeting for this project. That leaves a gap of eight to nine million dollars. Went to the Department of Economic Opportunity to say, you know, for us to get started, we need to fill that gap. We need to be able to fund it, and their recommendation was to apply for this Florida Department of Economic Opportunities Rural Community Development Revolving Loan Program. So this is a $9 million loan. We're asking you to authorize us to pursue. It is only 2% interest. It is flexible in terms of how you set the terms of the agreement and lateral flex. They've got a lot of negotiating room on how to actually set up the loan to benefit us. Want to know how we're going to repay it? We are talking about establishing a MSBU, possibly at the industrial park, to help repay any loan debt services we have in addition. But we've got a plan on how to deal with that.
Second. Got a motion and a second.
Oh, wait, wait.
Yeah, I was going to call them. I've got a card for this one if you want to come up and speak. You have three minutes.
I have the same rule with you, Mr. Chairman, that I'm speaking and y'all answer once I get done.
Yes.
So Sylvester Warren, first, I would like to say that I think that Tim Murphy would have made a great chairman. It's unfortunate that his majority of his fellow commissioners did not support him, though I sometimes disagree with his stance on his race. However, I'm concerned as to the project not being developed and not having any potential folks that want to develop out there that we know of and that are seriously committed. We're borrowing $9 million. 2% interest rate is, is okay. As a taxpayer, I would love to see a plan, not just paper crowds come up and verbally say, this is how we're going to pay it back, and this may happen out here, and we may use this to get it. There's a lot of maze, but there's, once you start borrowing money, those folks don't want to hear about all your maze and possibly want to know how you're going to pay the money back and where it's going to come from. So it would be nice that if public can get that, I think it's important, especially when it's time to make that payment, and nothing is out there developed, who's going to pay it? Where is that money going to come from? Where's that leave to taxpayers? Are we on the hook for paying that loan back if that development doesn't happen? And so those are serious concerns as relates to me and property, serious concerns of other taxpayers. And so I would be interested to know whether or not this board would be willing to go that far and explain to the taxpayers in detail. A solid plan. I know you guys are physical, responsible, so most physical, responsible individuals say, hey, look, this is exactly how we're going to do it. This is where we're going to borrow the money from, and this is how we're going to pay it back in the event. If this doesn't happen, this is where we're going to borrow money from and ask the community to be supportive. Thank you.
Mr. Krass. Oh, am I correct? Once you have the full plan in place, it will come back before the board for us to vote on?
Absolutely.
And all the details will be pointed out at that time?
Absolutely. Once the state awards it, and here's the loan, the board would have to approve the actual loan itself. To answer Mr. Warren's questions, typically, when you borrow money on a utility, the rate payers of that utility pay back the debt service. This being a unique situation, that's why we're establishing, trying to establish the MSBU so that if there is no utility customers, it can be repaid as we do the MSBUs for street lighting, road paving, could be borne by the customers at the industrial park, property owners. That's why we're looking at trying to do an MSBU as our backup. Hopefully, we'll have customers coming in, companies coming in, and their use of the utility will pay for the debt service on these.
Mr. Krass.
Yes, sir.
Have you went through all routes that we made to fund this project without borrowing money? Have you went through any, anything through the state tried to get money for that?
Yes, that's why we went to the Department of Economic Opportunity, and this is what they recommended. We were asking them actually if they could give us additional grant money from the Florida Jobs Growth Grant. At this point in time, they said this is the better route to go.
I know we've been working on this project now for several years, and it's kind of like some other things that's been kicked down the road. We need to get it done, and somewhere or another, we need to get the money to do the project.
And we do have companies always looking at the industrial park. It's just the nature of economic development. We can't publicly disclose what those companies are.
It is what's important. I can say, wait until we get a company. You have to put the infrastructure down, and they, we can provide you the utility for you. And that's the main thing. And also, a lot of grants you apply for have matching funds, but we can count all this as matching funds to future grants also. You know, at some point, you're going to have to have a little bit of skin in the game with your grants and stuff like that, too.
So like when you built Ellisville?
Yeah.
You used state revolving loan funds. It was a loan. Some of it was principal forgiveness. That was just part of building the Ellisville utility. When you get into the utility business, it's very common to have to use state low-interest loans.
Yeah, we're not reinventing the wheel here. How it's done a lot, a lot of utility programs.
And I like to say, I'm with Rocky and all the others on this. It's an investment. It's us trying to be entrepreneurial to get people in, and yes, we hope people come, but if they're not going to if we don't have the infrastructure. They're not going to come if there's not water. They're not going to come if there's not, it's just a fact of life. And I'm, because Commissioner Williams on that, you got to, you got to pay to play, and if we don't get on it and get it taken care of, we're going to be in bad shape one day when they, you know, the state is, well, not finished, and we're not finished. It's been a long, long road, and it takes courage to make that decision, though. It really does.
I have a motion. Oh, you got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
David?
Thank you very much. The next item is Budget Amendment 2312. As you remember, the board approved a grant to 20 River Water Management District to do meter replacements in the town of Fort White and Ellisville, and we're replacing all the meters. They're now manual meters, many of them very much older, not really accounting for water. There's a lot of water loss because meters need to be replaced, and replacing them all with brand-new radio read meters from Census. We chose Census because it's very common, used in larger utilities around us, parts, places, replacement, it's radio read, so the ability of somebody to go out and read a meter and write the numbers wrong, record them eliminates that. Very similar to the types of meters in the city of Lake City, obviously Newbury that we're piggybacking on, used, so it's very, it's a good meter. And that's why we wanted to set the radio reads, which you've already approved, piggybacking Census, so this is bringing you back the actual contract with Census, and also spectrum lease, spectrum lease, radio frequencies that you have to have for the meters to work. So we're asking you to approve the agreements with Census USA, spectrum lease for the FCC frequencies, and the budget amendment that would place the amount of 148 by 15 so that we can go ahead and proceed with the purchase. As you remember, the installation, which would match, is being paid for by the town of Fort White through their ARPA fund.
Second. Got a motion and a second. I'd just like to say, I'd like to thank Mike Noel for the way he got this contract approved. He saved us quite a bit of money by piggybacking off of this current contract, and that was a great move. Thank you, Mike. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is utility billing, software and hardware with Ross Tech. Obviously, the grant that we got from the 20 River Water Management District was 293 506. The amount we need for the actual replacement of meters is significantly lower than that, but we want to go back to the Water Management District and say, can we use an additional $40,000 to upgrade the software to operate the utility so that it is compatible with the new meter? We're asking you to approve the purchase of the software, server upgrades, and the annual maintenance agreement pending approval of the funding from the grant.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then finally, this is a good one, local assistance and tribal consistency fund from the U.S. Department of Treasury. This is one we didn't even realize that we were eligible for. But because we received PILT money from the federal government, we are eligible for this. It is an automatic payment of $729,853.26 in two installments. It is basically ARPA money. It can be used for any governmental purpose other than lobbying, and for any costs that were incurred anytime after March 15th, 2021. We're asking for your approval.
Motion to accept $800,000? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did you want to speak on this, Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry. If you want to speak, come up and speak. Okay, thank you. David, move on.
So now the two additions. The first one I'd like you to consider is changing the date of the December 15th meeting through Resolution 202268, moving it one week to the 22nd of December at 5:30 PM. Commissioner is going to be out of town on the 15th, and so we're trying to accommodate everybody's schedule.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we were going to have on the 15th the state EMS grant, because it's due the 16th. Because we've now moved the date of the meeting, I need you to go ahead and, if you would, approve the EMS funds for the grant, for the state EMS grant.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's it. Okay, we're going to have open public comments at this time. Does anybody like to speak? Come on up, man.
A new commissioner. I haven't met you. I live at Woodsboro North, 179 Northwest Turkey Creek Way. Terry Rasmussen. You've seen me here before. One thing we have, a resident named Darren Watson, this is new, 108 Northwest Kirsten, he found potential spring in his backyard with pipes constructed underground, 108 Northwest Kirsten Boulevard. I have pictures that I want to show you. Daniel Krass recently stated that our front pond is a spring-fed pond in Daniel Krapps recently stated that our front pond is a spring-fed pond, and this is a house that's across from that pond, and sees, it's, which we never knew, and the pond remains stagnant, so we're surprised about that. It doesn't appear to be spring-fed, or wondering if the spring-fed has a leak in the neighbor's house across the street from it. I'll show you pictures again. Darren did call the city, that's why I'm here. He asked me to ask someone if they could get help. He called the city water department about what he found in the backyard, but was told that they were under direction not to go into our neighborhood because of all the problems that were going on. So he asked me for help, and I said, we'll call Mr. Kevin Kirby, and I gave him Kevin's number. Sorry, Kevin, I thought I could do that. He said you didn't call him back. And his name's Darren Watson, and I'm not 100% that he felt that that's the truth, but he did say he called you, Kevin, to call back, so he could get some kind of direction on what to do with this. Again, it's across from the front pond, and the road entrance there, by the way, is sinking. We have many spots that are very low, and it's collecting a lot of water with very little rain when it rains, and definitely when that pond or flows, which it does. And that's pretty much the end of my conversation, except I, too, was disappointed that you didn't support Mr. Murphy. I would have supported him, too, and I think he would have made a great chairman. And that's it. And I have pictures, Kevin, if I can bring them down to you from my telephone, see what you think. We could be wrong about the spring in the guy's backyard, but it's not a septic. And the reason why he found it is because water kept seeping up in his backyard, so he dug a hole. So where's this coming from? And that's what he found.
How did the engine work, how on the water?
She's gonna talk to you about that. She's next. She's gonna discuss that next. My three minutes is up, so she's gonna discuss that.
Go ahead, Mr. K.
First of all, I want clarification on not going out there performing work. I did tell staff until whatever the debate is going on that the county should stay out of Woodborough North.
You'll get your time to speak in just a minute.
Okay, so in addition to whatever the city may have said, I did direct our staff not to perform work in Woodborough North until the situation has calmed down between the developers, property owners, Swanee River, permit, there's a permit violation, there's a lot of moving parts going on out there right now. Or is calling somebody back? I think everybody knows I have internal policy, I call everybody back. But I will be happy to talk to anybody about it just for clarification purposes, until all the permit violations, all the debate and decision-making is ended between the necessary parties, I have directed staff to stay out of Woodborough North.
Ma'am? Get with him after the meeting if you need to. After the meeting. Please have a seat.
Thank you.
He'll be available after the meeting.
Hi. I'm Nancy Turner with Woodborough North also, and I just want to talk about, on the record, that there is a compliance agreement now between Swanee River Water Management and the estate of Robert Jordan. And the estate has until the end of this month, 12/31, to bring the Phase 1 permit into compliance. And they, they came out and they have worked on the ditches by scraping them, and what we have seen since then, when it rains, it's still pooling and puddling the same as it was. It's not draining off, but they have until December 31st. Anyway, I just, we had an unofficial meeting at my house back in late August, and Mr. Kirby and Mr. Williams came. And we were talking about the May survey, and the ditches were gonna require extensive work to repair to be able to drain correctly. And I just want to say that I asked a question, if, if the, if the ditches were not satisfactorily corrected by the estate, that would the county be then coming out to correct them? And I was assured that they would, but that also, the survey, we have, I just want to say, we've still yet to be given full disclosure of the results of the survey, and the survey has been requested by Swanee River Water Management back in August, and to my knowledge, they are still, don't have it. They're still not getting it. It's been kept closed, closed to the best. So anyway, just want to say that, that our ditches have been scraped, they are not draining like they should. I guess all I have.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
All right, I asked, you must have saved me. Sylvester Warren, first thing I have is the proffer from Jeff Sidemaster. He says that Robbie Hollenworth uses cocaine.
We're not singling out commissioners in this meeting.
And I want to know whether or not the county is willing to put some type of urinalysis test in place for commissioners or not. And then I have, I didn't sing out nobody's official federal report. And then I have a letter that Mr. Hollenworth sent over to the city concerning Richardson Community Center, and what is the city interest, and from what I understand, the city is lost because the city has not mentioned anything, and we're just trying to understand, at least I'm trying to understand, what this is about, as to what their plans are for the Richardson Rec Center, because last I was here, y'all had a lease until 2028. Also, we were talking about some bathrooms over at the Richardson Park, and I think that's in Commissioner Williams' district. And I think Commissioner Williams said that he was interested in doing some bathrooms, but he hadn't gotten with me or the community and given us a time on it. And the last time I spoke to Commissioner Williams after this meeting, he told me some things, kind of hurt me a little bit, Commissioner, but I hear that you're a betting man. I hear that you're a betting man. Sometimes you like to do a little friendly wages, and you told me that, that you'll give, you'll make a vote to give the mother effer back to the, I'm, I'm talking to Commissioner, you say, you say you'll make a motion to give the mother effer back to the city. So I brought a $10,000 friendly debt that you won't make the motion. I brought another $10,000 that your buddies won't support the motion, but that's $20,000.
Sylvester, you're out of line. We're not making bets, and we're not throwing cash around, and we're not singling out commissioners at this, at this meeting. Now, if you've got something you want to add about Richardson, you add it, but you're not gonna single out commissioners.
I didn't sing out no commissioner.
I'm telling you exactly what I, what I.
Commissioners, I sing to anybody out? I ask questions.
Yes, you did single somebody out.
I have to do public comments. Maybe want to refer to your attorney.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes, sir.
Tell me one time you never lied.
I never lied to you.
Well, you said that you got the votes, but started our argument out there. You told me I got the vote to get Richardson, said it not to give y'all Richardson. Didn't you tell me that?
Did I tell you what?
What I just said.
Did I got the vote?
You told me you got the votes. You said I got the vote. The city council will not give y'all Richardson.
I don't know, I don't apologize to you. I don't apologize to you. Oh, so that's a right you want, okay, go ahead, Commissioner. I'm glad we engaged this time.
So if you got, if you got the votes, we, we gonna ask the city council, do they want Richardson back? So if you got the votes, it's automatically then. It's automatically because you said I got the votes. Y'all won't get Richardson. I got the vote. That's what led to the argument with you and I out there.
Nope. Can I ask, can I talk to you for a second?
You said you wouldn't lie to me, so you say you got the vote. We gonna see if you got the vote.
Sylvester, Sylvester, you need to sit down, please. Your time's up. Your time, yeah. Sylvester, your time's up, please sit down. And we'll address what you said. We'll, we'll address what you said.
We'll take this money and use it other ways then, Commissioner.
Yeah, good deal. All right, please sit down.
Yes, you ain't got enough.
Here, here's what I would say about Richardson. We have plans for a lot of money being spent out there. Now, if the city is interested in taking Richardson back, and I've heard rumors that they're gonna take it back, they're not gonna give it to us, I'm sure everybody up here's had rumors, and I think, I think Chairman Hollenworth done the right thing. Before we spend a pile of money at Richardson, are we gonna get Richardson? Because I, for one, am not gonna sit here and say, I will sue the city over Richardson. I'm not gonna get in that fight. And Commissioner Hollenworth, if you want to explain your position, go ahead.
The reason I wrote that letter is that, and I think I was justified in it, because it's been two weeks now, and I asked them for a letter. I didn't ask them for a vote, I asked them for a letter saying, you know, reiterating their position that they do not want Richardson Jim. I would be remiss if I didn't ask that, because it's been thrown around, and just like Mr. Williams says, you know, the city does what they do, and I'm, I'm, if we're gonna get in a fight over Richardson, and the city wants it, we, we, I know, Richardson wouldn't even be if it wasn't for Commissioner Williams and the county commission 10, 12 years ago. So I, I would be remiss not to write a letter. It's taxpayers' dollars. I'm not gonna go spend, I don't think anybody in the county or anyone would go spend millions of dollars on a place and then go, oh, y'all didn't want it, and y'all want it back now. So it, it's one of those situations where we, we'll cooperate with the city, whatever, you know, if they're, they're that adamant about it, and like Mr. Williams says, he has the votes, I, I, I really am remiss that I haven't received a letter back immediately saying, no, no, you know, we haven't received that. That gives me a lot of pause, and I'm sure it gives Commissioner Williams and the rest of us a lot of pause, but I'm sure they'll address it, and we'll see what happens, but, but when, when you hear that something, your invested money is fixing to be taken from you, then you need an answer. You need an answer forthwith, and let's find out who's going on Richardson Community Center. That's my opinion, and that's why I wrote the letter.
You want to hear back from the city? Warren told me verbally, I mean vocally, I mean biblically, I got the votes, and you won't get it back. Yes, you did say that, and you said damn lies you say you did.
All right, that's it. We're not gonna get in no arguments here.
I ain't got no money. I can't bet money.
Yep, okay, that's, that's settled. Anybody else have a public comment? Anybody else have any public comment?
My name's Derek Snead. I've spoken about money being.
Say your name, say your name.
He did, he did.
Okay.
We're gonna reset my time now, because I'm about 10 seconds in.
You owe you time, don't you?
So I've spoken about the Richardson Center and the cover-up that you guys are perpetuating, and just like the facial expression that was just expressed by one of the members up there, it's a joke. And now we're at the point that you guys won't even acknowledge who downloaded the video, who saw or has access to get the video, you won't acknowledge or address what vendors were there, and this all has to do with one of your county employees that stole my damn money. Why don't you just show the video? Now, I heard at the beginning by one of these commissioners, he talked about spending tax dollars efficiently. You think it's efficient to keep dragging this out? I also heard the words kicking the can down the road. That's exactly what's going on here. Now, I gave a subpoena to have that video to several people, including Mr. Kraus tonight, but my question is, you've got a county employee that it's already been acknowledged he stole the money, and you guys are still perpetuating the cover-up of that, and not one of you has really said, yeah, we probably should look at that. And you heard from a previous employee there, Chevella, and she got cut off by her three minutes, that she saw something disturbing on that video. A word like seeing something disturbing on a video probably should warrant having somebody look into it. Instead, you sit back complicit. On top of that, just a second. It's been about six months since this happened, all over $350. I mean, I don't understand why you guys don't show more interest in what it's been shown and proven by people that have seen this, that you don't want to have public that he stole the money. Now, the last thing I want to address is your employees. That one stole the money, and I guess each one of you up there is an employee, or you work for the people, and I'll just say this, that if the FBI says one of your employees does cocaine, you might want to look into it. Now, the person that just smirked and laughed, without naming him, I did not name him, so don't even, well, he's laughing his ass off in front of that camera about his cocaine use that the FBI put out there. How sad is that, that you guys don't look into that? And yeah, y'all, especially one of them, probably needs to be drug tested. That's my three minutes.
Okay, I'll address Mr. Snead. I called the FBI when that rumor was put out, and it was put out by a criminal who stole hundreds of thousands of dollars from an old man, and a criminal that did everything he could do to hurt this community and pay off for criminal, you know, criminal, anything you wanted, any, you could buy justice in this county. So that's who it came from, and second of all, it was not the FBI that said it. It was not the FBI that said it. It was him that said it, and it wasn't even in a proffer or a sworn statement. And, and I don't care that he said it. He, he's a criminal, and that's the facts of life. It just is what it is. I have never done cocaine and will not do cocaine.
You're done, you're done, sit down. You're done, shut down, please.
It was not illegal, he was not under oath.
Remove him right now. Remove him.
The FBI told me it was not a sworn statement, it was just him talking. So, because I was going to go down and do something to help prosecute him because he was lying, but anybody that knows me knows I don't use cocaine, even people that use cocaine know I don't use cocaine, never have, never will. And I, I hate to have to address this, but I'm tired of hearing it. So it's a, it's a situation where a criminal was trying to put anybody in a conspiracy or anything he could do to make other people look bad, and I'm not a criminal. So I appreciate, kind of appreciate him bringing it up. So it's cleared up now, and, and I'm not, I won't talk about it anymore. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hollenworth, I would add, there were several names on that list that I think we all know are very influential, upstanding citizens in this community, and I agree with you, he was just trying to bring down anybody he could bring down because of his mistakes. Anybody else have a three minutes? Come on down, Mr. Osteen.
My name's Franco Steen, and I have only one thing that I want to discuss. Last meeting, had a feller here with a rain suit on, that was wet on the inside. That'll give you pause to think. The only thing I can come up with is a male diaper.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna talk about other people here. Let's, let's don't do that. We don't go into.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the time.
Anybody else have three minutes? David?
Yeah, the updates from the manager, Christmas parade.
David, we talking to the mic, please?
I apologize for that. The updates from the manager include the Christmas parade, which will be a week from Saturday. It'll be the Fort White Christmas parade, where lineup begins at 10:00 a.m., and then the Lake City Christmas parade, which will begin at 6:00, 6:00 p.m., with 4:00 p.m. basically set up. So I encourage everybody to come to the Christmas parade. We'll have a float in both of them. The next item is a legislative delegation event. I just wanted to remind everybody that the legislative delegation from Tallahassee is coming on Monday, next Monday, December 5. coming on Monday, next Monday, December 5th, at the college, 9:00 a.m. The issues we're going to be talking about that we're going to be pushing this year, the water plant at the North Florida Mega Industrial Park, water and sewer at Fort White, the Bethlehem Community Center, the sheriff's office crime lab slash evidence building. And then there's some policy issues that we may talk about, including revenue sharing, fuel tax, and what do you do when you have electric cars that don't pay fuel tax but still use the roadways? How do you compensate for that? Talked a little bit about, maybe talking about the 911 revenue sharing, where right now, the rules regarding 911 revenue sharing, we get this money for 911 calls. It can only be used for the incoming call. It can't be used for the dispatch. So the accounting for it is very cumbersome and burdensome. And we're going to ask the legislature if they can simplify it, make it straightforward, that if you're giving money for 911, it should be for dispatch and not have to be trying to segregate what goes for getting the call into the building and what calls for getting the radio calls out. And then, of course, we're going to talk to the small county coalition. And we, of course, propose supporting small county coalition issues. Stash is working with us on that. And that'll be Monday. And then finally, the other thing I wanted to bring up is we now have in writing the price for the reporter building and the two appraisals and plan to move forward with a contract to negotiate a contract for purchase and sale on the building. Once we come up with that, that contract would come back to the board for approval or not approval, depending on what the board would like to do. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But right now, we're at the point where we are negotiating for the purchase and sale of the property.
Wives, you have anything?
No, sir.
Bobby? No, sir.
I just want to say thank you for welcoming me back on this board. I want to be here and do what we all need to do and spend our county money in the right places and make all of the people here like us instead of not liking us. So hopefully that will take place soon.
Bishop Fittes, welcome back. It's your second term. Throughout your campaign, I heard you say, and I heard several people say, that you have some unfinished business from the last time. You'd like to address that so we can get it out and let's see what it is?
Not right at this time.
I'd just like to say about the Lake City Reporter Building, you know, our building department is busting at the seams. They don't have room for desks that they need now. We need this extra room, and we can, we can actually, we can actually pay for this building with the rent we're paying for the court reporters if we move, if we move the building department and the health department, other places over to this building and move the court reporters into the annex where they were supposed to be when it was remodeled. That rent that we're paying for their buildings would be more than sufficient to, you know, pay for this reporter building. I hope all the other commissioners support that, purchasing this building. We've been waiting on these, we've been waiting on these appraisals for a while and finally got them and prices in line.
Do we have numbers on that? I hadn't seen that myself.
Yeah, David's going to see.
I'd like to see that if it's a, if it's a wash and we're, you know...
I'll defer to Joel.
So under statute, when you have an offer to purchase or offer to sell property to the county over a certain threshold, you have to get two appraisals. And those appraisals have to be equal to or greater than the average of those two appraisals. And what we've learned is based on what Lake City Reporter is wanting to sell the property for versus the appraisals we've received, we're in the green. Okay, so legally, you could make the purchase. Now, what we have to do next is enter into a purchase and sale agreement. And those of you who've bought real estate know how that works. There's going to be due diligence periods, inspections periods, all those sorts of things that if the board approves that contract, then those periods will start. Obviously, those of you who've seen the building know it's got quite a few issues, and we'll need to assess those and come back with hard numbers for what that might cost so that if you ultimately approve going to closing, we'll know exactly what we're getting. It's real early in the process, but so far, the lights are all green. We can continue to move.
It would also solve a big problem we have with parking. Everybody has had that problem trying to find a parking spot in courthouse.
Yeah, I got a few things, Chair. Previous meetings that we had relevant to the discussion that we had here on the board about the putting a moratorium on developments, at this time, I'm 100% not for putting a total moratorium. But one thing I just want to point out to the board, the situation that the ladies have been coming up here diligently for the last several months, at a bare minimum, myself and Kevin Kirby had a discussion about this, minimum guidelines need to be enacted to prevent stuff such as that. As such, if there would have been in our LDRs a situation towards of that, there had to be a survey of completion and authenticity that Woodbury North wouldn't be dealing with this situation. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin. And so, and I've done a little bit of checking. There's several other counties surrounding us, in throughout Florida, that walk upon these guidelines. And that's a simple fix, I think, that could alleviate a lot of our headaches that, of course, staff and them poor people out there in Ron's district is having to deal with. And it would prevent some headaches in the future. You know, I know there's other guideline, I mean, other people knocking on the door. And I'm not for stopping, stopping it because I'm not wanting to put a moratorium on it. But I would encourage a chair, if we can move forward and really investigate at least this part of it, to maybe enact that in the LDRs to prevent, you know, some headache to this board in the future. And then also having a discussion with Joel, seems like our mitigation credits, they're back active and what have you. But as this board remembers, there's an ongoing lawsuit relevant to that. And I think it's according to some discussion myself and Joel had, it may be time for the shade meeting to decide what, how we're going to handle this.
Yes, sir. Following up on that, there's one, I'm waiting on one call back from Mr. Olson, but that's my understanding is that we'll be meeting with him. I was hoping to be able to request it today, but I didn't get the necessary information. But yeah, it's a, it's an unusual set of circumstances. I'll explain to the board in more detail when we do get into that meeting. But we're hoping that we're getting to that point.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy, I agree with you. And this situation with Woodbury North had brought up some issues that we had with approving our subdivision. I actually sat in on a meeting the other day where our staff is discussing those issues now. And so Kevin, you want to?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Murphy, I completely agree. We do not want to stop development. Where we're at is a crossroads. So we have folks applying for development permits. And I completely, as we discussed, an as-built survey is definitely needed to prevent what happened at Woodbury North. For educational purposes, we've always required as-bills. There's a significant difference between as-built and as-built survey. As-built, engineer of record, whoever the developer is, he goes and visually validates X amount of pipes, X amount of width of pavement, et cetera, et cetera. Well, without an as-built survey to validate the product was built according to the approved plans, your naked eye just simply cannot see these things. Crossroads that we're at is if we approve a permit today without these amended, for example, as-built survey in your land development regulations, the developer is not required to provide those documents. As the lady indicated earlier about the survey, Woodbury North particular situation, that survey was paid for by a home builder, I guess you would call it, out of his private money. And he took exception for anybody asking for that survey. Okay? Those are the examples that you're bumping into without the amendments to the LDRs, such as the as-built survey. Our attorney is working very hard getting those LDRs amended. That is the crossroads you're at. If you issue a permit today without the LDR amendments, you're leaving yourself wide open for another Woodbury North.
And while we are, the current LDRs, we're working with the county engineer. The way they're drafted right now, the county engineer has some latitude. So Chad is going over every single document that comes across the desk right now with a fine ticket. So until we get, so what I feel like we've got, we've got a stopgap to get it right. So we shouldn't have another Woodbury North regardless. But we are, the LDR amendments are going to have the as-bills. It's, look, guys, it's going to cost the developers more to develop. But the reason it's going to cost more is because if they don't spend the extra money for the developing, for the development, you will absolutely end up with another development. So you have to do everything on the front end, which means they'll spend a little bit more. But you won't have these backend problems. And honestly, the way it works, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but it ends up tuning us up for about a half million dollars every 10 years where we're having to go spend money that developers shouldn't have been spending. So we're covering the public's treasury, making sure that the developments that come up in this county are top flight and where they need to be. And the one meeting we've had with the developer last week enthusiastically supported all of this. He wants to develop top-flight communities. So we're there. It's just, as I explained to you guys a couple meetings ago, it's just, it's an arduous process. In retrospect, probably something we could have hired an outside consultant on so much. But we're getting there. We're almost there.
Yes, sir.
I think I got most of our conversation. We got to learn to talk into the mic, guys.
I'm trying.
But I'm in agreement that we need to amend our LDR to do just, just that, a survey deal because I got a mess out there. I mean, a total mess out there, Woodbury North. Swanee River Water Management have some fault in this, in this thing also. Anything that we can do to make ourselves whole, then we need to do it. And then work through what we have out there that, that the boss go everywhere. Lake City Reporter is saying it's bad. It is a bad situation.
Do you have a comment?
Move to adjourned.
Adjourned.